This meeting of the City of City Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. The clerk can call a rule, please.
Terry McLenn.
Here.
Joyce Zeller.
Here.
Pete Perkypile.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Nancy Snyder.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
I've got six.
All right, everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, moves us to approval of the agenda.
To approve.
Second.
Second. I need to add the re-up or the reaplication of Ruth Hager to the parks for position number two. You should have a copy of that. I also need to postpone new business number eight till next meeting. Lonnie didn't get a chance to get the resolution done. Yes, sir?
Would like to add a review of ordinance number 2179 related to membership on the planning committee and if possible, if the...
Under new?
Would like to see if we could do it after... Yeah, we... Yes, after... New business will be fine, I'm sorry. That'll be fine.
2189? I'm sorry. What was it?
2179.
Review of ordinance 2179 regarding employee or membership of planning.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Anybody else? Ms. Snyder.
I would like to end at the end... Add at the end of new business, a short discussion on protocol at the table, please.
Second.
Number 10.
On what? What was that?
Protocol at the table.
Oh. You hit it me.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I'd like to change number five under new business to a resolution regarding Black Bass Dam. Instead of an update, this is a resolution for discussion.
May I second it? Any other changes, deletions? I also need to move Mr. Casalero up to the first of unfinished business so we can let him get his stuff done and be on his way.
So new business, too?
Yeah. So we just bump him up one.
You're moving him to where?
Number one, new business.
Number one, new business or...
We should get through unfinished pretty quick.
Okay. After public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, no. No, no, no.
No.
New business.
New business.
Oh, okay.
We should get through new business or old business pretty quick. Anything else? All right. All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Sign. Okay. Moves us to approval of amendment 22nd, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Changes, deletions, corrections. If not, all in favor of the improvements?
Right. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, we've got one extra.
Yes.
Moves us commission committee authority reports expired terms. Beverly, you got some stuff for planning?
I wanted to let you know that five planning commissioners plus Glenna went to the Arkansas Association of Planners Conference held in Fayetteville last week, and I wanted to just thank you for supporting us and letting us go to that. On tomorrow's agenda on the planning commission, we have new construction review for an ice machine at 106 East Van Buren, which is across the street from the lumberyard or Legends. We also have new construction review for 275 North Main, and we have a Nut Street vacation. Isn't that fun stuff? Last week, planning sent you recommendations for C3 restrictions to add to a future agenda, and you also had multifamily dwellings for a future agenda and procedures for land vacating on a future agenda, and so those are things to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hope to hear anything from CAPC Hospital. Brings us to Ruth Hager's reaplication for position number two.
Move to approve the nomination of Ruth Hager for...
Number two.
Position two for parks?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
She is a seated person right now.
She still is. She has maintained.
Did we just approve the nomination or did we approve her continually nonactively?
Same as.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Nothing under HTC or cemetery. It does move us on to public comments since Diane gets back with the board. Do we have any public comment? Peoples out there? Looks like we do. Thank you. Okay. Number one is Lila Allison. Hi, Lila. Want to introduce yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Lila Allison. I am a new business owner in town on Spring Street at 77 Spring Street. My business is Allison Art Company. I'm also a metalsmith. I work out of my store on Spring Street. I have heard about an agenda to close Spring Street, and I'm very concerned about it, and I just have a little mention about it that I'd like to read. I believe that closing any street in town is a very bad idea for business owners. We do not need to add carts and vendors, which is something that I've heard talk about, or to close our streets at all to advertise that Eureka is a wonderful Ozark oasis. It has been a treasure for thousands and thousands of visitors for decades. We just need our city to advertise for all of the amazing businesses in town, those that collect the CAPC and those that do not. I am a new business. It was not a choice for me to collect the CAPC tax or not. It would be nice if it might be revisited and see if we couldn't reduce it and possibly get everyone to participate. I know that's something that's happened before, but something we might be able to revisit because I think some business owners would be more than happy to collect it to make things better for everyone. There are businesses that are already here struggling to stay here and keep their doors open. We don't feel like it makes any sense to put additional vendors in front of our businesses. We pay really high dollar rent for our square footage, and to put someone that only has to pay a small amount to stand or set up their art directly in front of me when I pay 12 months out of the year... I pay $900 a month, to be totally honest, and my store is a closet. It's 13 feet wide by 24 feet in length. So to have somebody else come in from out of town and set up in front of my store is disheartening, and today is slow. We don't have enough traffic to close the streets. There's plenty of room for anybody that's walking around town at any time of the year to walk on the sidewalk. It is not 1980 in Eureka anymore. We're not flourishing like that. If we were flourishing, we might not mind sharing. We might not, you know, mind having vendors in town every once in a while for special events, but to think that it might happen full-time or at anyone's whim is frightening to a lot of us, so thank you, and please consider the CAPC thing, you know, maybe less for everyone could be better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mel Shipley.
Hello, sir. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. At the last meeting, I had mentioned the number of people that did not want the street closed, Spring Street closed, and the representative of the Arts Council more or less said that that's not true, and her figures are not the same as mine, which kind of throws some fuzzy math at you guys, and what I want to do is I want to clear the air and make sure that when I make a statement, it's honest and it's truthful. So I do have a packet for each one of you that has the names of the businesses, the people who have signed up that said they do not want the street closed, and on the very back part of the page is their signatures with their address. I spelled them out here. There's also another bit of information here you may have wanted to breeze through in your own time. I don't want to take up any of your time tonight because you've been generous with me so far, but I do want to leave this with you to clear the air so we do know beyond a shadow of doubt that more than 50% of the people on Spring Street do not want this street closed, and I appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Hey, Mr. Charles Ragsdale. Charles.
Hi, I'm Charles Ragsdale. I live at 282 Spring Street. I'm also the chairman of the CAPC. As the chairman of the CAPC, I'd like to take just a second or two and invite everyone to hit theod.org, the website, and get your BB King tickets while they're still available. They went on sale on the 6th, and I know from the server reaction that a lot of people were hitting it and getting their tickets that day, but I know we got a lot of great seats left because every seat in the auditorium is a great seat. So if you haven't got your BB King tickets yet, they are available at theod.org. He will be here in November. Now, as a citizen, I would like to address the council. Dear Mayor and Alderman, I want to express my opposition to the proposed increases in special event parking fees going from $3 to $9, far more than the meters bring in on an average day. Tripling of the current fee would be exorbitant. The increase in cost could jeopardize the financial viability of several of the city's special events, many of which struggle to break even or eke out a meaningful profit. All those profits, in most instances, go to nonprofit organizations as a fundraiser. We also have to be viable as a tourism city against other towns and what they would charge for comparable parking. We checked with the Hot Springs Blues Festival producers. They are only charged $2 per day for meter for their Blues Festival parking. We must remain competitive to continue to earn these types of groups' businesses and getting them to come to Eureka Springs. They generate millions of dollars of revenue for our businesses, and in doing so, generate tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue to the city through the taxes and through all of the support that they give to our economy by coming back time and time and time again after they found us through those special events. We work around 3,000 volunteer hours a year to produce Eureka Springs's Blues Weekend. Every dollar that the city would take in additional parking fees from us would be money that would either go from our advertising, our talent budget, or from the profits that we occasionally eke out for our nonprofit organizations. Those organizations are the Blues Foundation, a 501(c)(3) internationally acclaimed organization; Turpentine Creek, a local wildlife refuge, once again, a 501(c)(3) organization that is doing miraculous things, saving animals' lives, and we also benefit some of the local organizations by donating items to them for their auctions, like for years now we've supported Clear Spring Schools' silent auction. I don't know how many volunteers I can get if they knew that a third of the profits that we eked out last year would have gone to the parking meter fund if the parking meters had cost us $9 apiece instead of $3 apiece. Volunteers don't want to work for a parking meter, but they love working for big cats and Blues Cats. While I can't speak for all the other promoters of events, Blues Weekend rents bare minimum number of parking spaces that we feel that we'll need based upon what we're offering to artists to come in from out of town, volunteers that we have coming in that are going to be running errands back and forth during the day and need to have quick access to their vehicles, or for our handicapped visitors and volunteers that can't walk up and down from Plain Hill. So unfortunately, the additional parking that we have in the area really isn't an option for us. We have to have close-up parking right there at the auditorium. If the rates are tripled, we'd have to eliminate all volunteer parking. We've looked at buses. It's not an option. They cost $3,000. That's the best year that we've ever had in profits. They would have bankrupted us by now. We urge you to hold a workshop so other people could maybe meet, work this out, and come up with a better plan than just tripling the rates. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. You want to send more in? Ms. Lori Ragsdale. For the record.
Yeah, let's move.
Good evening. My name is Lori Ragsdale. I live at 282 Spring Street, and I am a co-promoter of Eureka Springs Blues Weekend, and I appreciate your attention this evening. Just would really like to bring to your attention that as a promoter for Eureka Springs, we are bringing people to town on a regular basis, which increases our city's revenue. This is all about the donations that we bring in and are able to help our friends at Turpentine Creek, which does happen to be one of the largest tourist attractions here in Eureka Springs, so one we're here for, as Charles said, the Blues Cats and the Big Cats. We have been involved at Turpentine Creek since 1998, long before we moved to Eureka Springs. Part of that was because we had a passion for saving these Big Cats and us having the opportunity to help, not only with our financial dollars, but also with our hearts. And in doing so, we have brought many other people, our volunteers donate their time, and again, in being able to donate that time, we don't want to donate to the city's parking meters to be able to bring an event to, you know, to Eureka Springs downtown. Granted, we would encourage and have no problem with spending the $3 today, but increasing a fee by 300%, that's nowhere even near what the regular economy increase is. Take that into consideration. We have over 3,000 volunteer hours, and we're able to give about $3,000 average to our beneficiary, Turpentine Creek. And if we had to take that $1,000 plus and give it to the city, again, as Charles said, I think that we would have a more difficult time getting our volunteers to come and donate their time. The economic impact that Blues Weekend itself has on this city is anywhere from $1 to $2 million. That is a financial impact that has a great benefit to this city, and you want to have that promoter who may be working for a not-for-profit take that money away from that not-for-profit to give it to the city. We appreciate the opportunity to speak, and we would like and encourage you to all have a workshop to discuss the details of this, to make the opportunity for other promoters to be able to come in and speak on their own behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That will do for public comment. That moves us on to unfinished business. Number one is discussion ordinance 2187, third reading, motion to discuss.
Oh, okay. Moved, so moved.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules in place ordinance number 2187 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Yeah, we'll get a vote here in just a second.
Mr. McLenn.
Rightly.
Mr. Perkypile.
No.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
For two.
Ms. Snyder.
Can I read it first?
I'm gonna read. I can never keep this straight.
Okay. Okay. All right. I need it.
No, she has to read it.
Yeah, she's gotta read it now.
Ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 5.12, recycling glass and cardboard by restaurants and bars.
Ms. Snyder, you're first. Go ahead.
Okay.
Point of order. Discussion.
Go ahead.
We have to have a motion on the table before we can go into discussion.
Mr. DeVito, go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance number 2187 on its third reading.
Second.
We have to do a roll call. Hold on a minute, one also. Hang on.
Discussion.
Now we're discussing?
Now we can have a discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. Were you supposed to be looking into something for us? Mr. Weaver.
If I was you, you'd give a monkey.
Scavenging and that kind of stuff?
Well, the taking of items that are placed for collection is illegal already, under our code.
And it doesn't have to be respecified in this?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. I thought there was something you're supposed to be looking into. Can't find my notes.
Need for a discussion? Okay.
Oh, that's what it was. We were doing glass and cardboard. I asked you about adding plastic. Somebody... You were gone, so you got appointed, was supposed to talk to the recycle people about doing, including plastic in the recycling.
Presently, they pick up cardboard and glass. You know, maybe in the future, if we want to expand the recycling program to add other items, I'm all in favor of that. Right now, we're on the third reading of glass and cardboard, so I feel like we should go forward with this ordinance at this time.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay. You were appointed in view of your absence to check with the recycling people to see about adding plastic, because it doesn't make any sense to do two out of three. Apparently, you didn't know for whatever reason, but I think we should postpone this until that gets checked into so we can do it all at one time.
Mr. Mitchell.
I understand where Ms. Snyder's coming from, but I don't recall it that way. I recall that we had the discussion about adding it, but I don't recall appointing James in his absence to research it. I know we had a healthy discussion about it. I'm inclined to go with the ordinance as it's written now and then come back after the fact, should it pass, and look at adding it by having the recycling guru, the head of that, come down and discuss expanding it to plastic, and then at that time, if we choose, we could add it. Likewise, there's... I have received some input from some other folks about cities across the country that are charging a tax on plastic bags that are given out by merchants, grocery stores, et cetera. Glenwood Springs, Basalt, Aspen, et cetera, all charge $0.05 per bag, tax that goes to the city. So that could also be something in the future, but it should not deter from where we're at right now on the third reading.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Yeah, the last meeting, I had made a motion for the third reading, and Joyce had seconded, but we withdrew that on the basis that somebody was going to check, and not just plastic, but for cans as well. But, you know, if no one's taken, done the work to do that, then I think we need to proceed with this now, and you want to tackle the other at a later date than then.
Any further? All right. We still have a pending vote.
Mr. Perkypile.
No.
Ms. Zeller.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McLenn.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
For two.
Okay. That'll take care of that one. Moves this on to number two, ordinance 2189, be the second read. Motion to discuss.
Second. Second.
May I second it? Okay. Ms. Snyder.
We do discussion now?
No.
I can never keep this in order.
But you're going to make a motion. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2189, on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Ms. Snyder.
Under second, we have to do a roll call?
Suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McLenn.
Here.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Ms. Zeller.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2189, an ordinance amending Chapter 8.48 of the Municipal Code pertaining to parking for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Move to approve ordinance number 2189 on the second reading.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion.
Aye.
We need discussion.
Go ahead. Ms. Snyder, you've had your hand up for a little bit. Go ahead.
Okay. Even though I'm thoroughly for and thrilled to death that we're finally going to get proper rates on the parking lot, I do agree thoroughly with Rags in regards to nonprofits, so I would like to amend this ordinance, basically saying city-recognized nonprofits on an annual event calendar would be exempt from the $9. They would either be free or do three, however you guys would like to decide. But that is something we have to take in consideration. When it's a business, as some of our events are, that's one thing. When it's a nonprofit, that's a totally different world. If it's an event that happens once a year, that's one thing. If it's weekly, forget it, but you see my point? We do need to have some bend in there, consideration of what kind of event this is that's taking a lot. And I didn't know if a seasonal clause would be appropriate, Mr. Attorney.
I don't know how a seasonal clause would work, and you... The definition that you have just given, I don't think would fit with enforcement at all because the city does not recognize charities. If you want a definition, it's going to have to have a better definition of what a charity is.
Well, I said a nonprofit as opposed to a charity.
The definition of nonprofit can vary also.
Well, how would you see this worded?
I don't know that you can word it for what you're saying because I think almost all the renters probably are nonprofit under some definition. I would like to at least get some kind of an idea of what the dollars are that are being spoken to, you know, from Charles or anyone else for that matter, what, you know, he talked about 10 spots for two days, or maybe Diane has some clarification?
I looked at all the special event permits that asked for parking, and the most parking taken is during the Eureka. Now, the Blues, the Blues Festival that Rags does, he took 34 spaces during that time for three days.
34 individual spaces?
Yes.
Now, how many lots is that? Break it down that way.
Just right here. Okay. He took all, he took all the spaces here and then by the auditorium.
So he took the other side of the courthouse plus?
Just the spaces on the back wall, First Street.
Oh, okay.
Just us. And so over the most, and like I said, the biggest event that we use...
So, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 times in this past year that we rented spaces. Now, a lot of times when people rent spaces, they don't use them. So for $3 a day, they have a space that sits there vacant. And it's like with the antique cars this weekend, they rented every single space we had, which is 86 spaces. And in the afternoon, when they came through the parade, they parked around the courthouse here, which left our parking lot by the New Delhi and the art wall vacant. And so they were kind enough to open it up and let other people park there because they weren't being used, because that's a big issue that I think we have, is we rent these spaces and nobody uses them. For three bucks a day, they can rent it, and, you know, if they use it, great, if not, it's no big deal to them. But we do lose revenue on that.
Mr. Mitchell?
Diane, I'm not to put you on the spot there. There's no way to tell how many of those are 501(c)(3)'s that are legitimate nonprofits that have that status officially?
I can tell you who rented them this past year. I have the list of people. And I don't know offhand which ones are nonprofit or not. Now, we had the Bluegrass people, and we didn't make them pay.
The city?
Yes. And Eureka, Fat Tire, Fourth of July, Opera in the Ozarks, which we made them pay for being in the auditorium, Blues, Antique Automobile, Celebrate Jesus, Mardi Gras, Crescent Classic, Jazz, Oktoberfest, Miadas, and Folk Fest. That's who's rented so far for the entire year.
So, to continue, Mr. Attorney, legal advisor sitting at the table, whose opinion we validly look forward to. 501(c)(3)' is not a bad way to go if you have that official designation. That could be built into one, could it not, potentially?
It could, and I would hazard a guess that two-thirds of that list probably have that designation.
You think so?
Yes, they do.
That would put an end to that. And then, Diane, did you say that 2,000 was all of those people, all of those spaces total?
Yes, $2,010.
It's not a, we're not talking about a lot of money really, are we?
That's the $3 that we collected for each space.
Should have been tripled, so if we went to nine, you know, we'd have a lot more money. Six, correct. Six, correct. And I'm all for making money. I mean, let's go...
Well, I don't see it as really looking money, it's just being fair. You know, we're losing revenue and, you know, I just think it's supposed to be fair.
Ms. McClung, do you have anything else to add to your comments? Did that answer your question?
Did I ask the question?
No, did she answer your question?
Did I ask the question?
Yes, she did.
Okay. Then it must have answered.
It should have been.
Well, I'm, you know, just getting up to speed with this issue, and I think Mr. Ragsdale's point about possibly a workshop is probably a good idea, because having heard what the Antique Car Show took from the downtown merchants, almost 100 parking spaces on a Saturday afternoon, no offense to the Antique Car Show, if you want to talk about lost revenue, you're talking about a lot of lost revenue, because there were a lot of quiet places on Saturday afternoon when we should have been very busy. And when we lose 100 parking spaces on a Saturday, that's a significant impact to the merchants that generate the revenue for this city. So, no offense, but we're talking about nickels and dimes with parking meters. We're talking about a lot of money. When you can figure you can turn over a parking spot three times during the day, and the impact of merchants in the community is a pretty significant hit to a community that doesn't have parking adequate in the first place. I will take exception to a 200% increase in parking fees. I might choke down 100%. Well, 100% increase would be $3 to $6, and a 200% increase would be another $6 to $9. So even 100% increase on anything is a sizable jump. Maybe we should consider looking at what most cities do, and that is that prime parking spots in certain sections of town have a higher cost to park there. I mean, I've been in town where meters were $6 an hour. Now, prime parking in Eureka, a dollar an hour, that's probably a pretty good deal. When you consider the pay lots are $5 for four hours, they're already priced higher than what our convenient parking is. So I, I think a workshop's probably a pretty good idea, because A, I would like to eliminate how many spaces we allocate for events, because 90-some spaces is way too many spaces. And maybe we ought to look at increasing revenue for prime locations, because that's going to generate revenue every day of the week throughout the year, and not just for those certain festivals. So I'm not going to vote for this if it comes up to another vote. I think there's a lot of things we need to consider than just a 200% increase on special event parking fees.
Mr. Perkypile?
Well, I, I agree with you, Mr. DeVito, on something.
Yes, I am. I think that too.
But here's, here's why I differ just a bit, in the fact that for this, for Rags' event and Laurie's event, not to single them out in particular, they do bring in quite a bit of revenue to the city's coffers with the, I mean, I don't know how calculable it is, but they have indicated that there is a study by the University of Arkansas that has indicated that, you know, $1.2 to $2 million worth of business is done here as a result of their four-day event, which, that's significant. That's a significant amount of revenue into the city. And I really think we do need probably halt this moving forward, and let's do have a workshop and let's, let's talk about this. Because it's not only that aspect, I think Mr. DeVito's quite right in that, you know, when you take all the, and I told my wife this, you know, that I drove through town and all, all the city's parking was taped up, you know, on Saturday. That's the big day, right? Well, it was all taped up, and so there was no place for anybody to go, you know, that wanted to come to the city to shop. So we need to look at both sides of the coin. We need to have shopping, I mean, parking spaces available for, for our businesses that are here, but we also need to have, look at the impact of some of these, these events. I mean, Blues Weekend, that's an event that generates income, you know? Antique Car Weekend, it's neat, but does it generate a lot of income? Well, it probably does. But, you know, is it quantifiable? I guess that's, that's my, my point. And we probably need to take our time to discuss this rather than trying to rush this through.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, it's, uh, it does generate a lot of income. It, uh, it puts a lot of heads in beds and a lot of meals, you know? You know, I can't say what they do as far as retail. I don't see a lot of them.
It's down.
Well, I can't argue that, but, but the numbers are important. It's, it's an important weekend. Uh, you know, I, I think we've got to be just real careful how we treat these kind of groups too, because, uh, you know, there's a lot of places they can go. Uh, we, I think the workshop's a good idea, I really do. Um, you know, I think we need to proceed with caution, because a lot of money is generated by many of these, you know, the, the bigger ones, like, like Blues Festival and Antique Car Show and things like that.
Ms. Eller?
Well, I, I agree, um, that, yeah, we could be biting the hand that feeds us if we make this too expensive. However, I spent a lot of time researching this. One thing I discovered is that nobody really knows how much a parking meter generates in, on a weekend, per day, because no records are kept. The money is collected once a week, and it just goes right, it's just collected in a pile and it goes right to the bank, deposited, so nobody knows where this money came from. So we're only guessing. If the meter was rented continually for seven hours at a dollar an hour, it would be $7 a day. So we don't really know what we're dealing with there, and I hate not knowing, not having the numbers in front of me to make a decision. Another thing is because these are so cheap to rent at $3, it's being abused. Nobody really figures how many they actually need. It's just like, well, it's so cheap, rent them all, and, you know, if we don't use them, so what? So if we raise the price of it to make it, um, it's a management problem. If the events that are renting these things really had to think about how many spaces they needed, or keep records of them, or even find out ahead of time who's going to need a parking space, um, and maybe just issue a ticket for it or something so that they manage it very tightly, I don't think these many things would be used. Now, with the Antique Car Festival, yeah, well, only $3, you know, they have money, who cares? Let's just rent them all. This is not fair to the downtown merchants. Uh, if they're really going to use that space, fine, but when I talked to Diane today, she said she's been keeping track of this and going out to see how many of these spaces are occupied during everything. And even during the Blues Festival, there were some slots that weren't used at all. So I think it's a management on one thing, it's a matter of abuse on the part of the people that are renting these spaces, because they don't cost enough that they have to watch the money. And on the other hand, um, we're only thinking of increasing our gross here from 2,000 to 6,000 annually, if we raise this to $9. So that is not enough money to run the risk of shooting ourselves in the foot by discouraging attendance. It's not, we're not talking about big dollars here. If we were talking about $10,000 or $12,000, then I'd pay attention. But going from 2,000 to 6,000 is no big deal.
Mr. Mitchell?
Based on that eloquent analysis, I would like to make a motion that we table the ordinance number 2189 pending a workshop.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Snyder?
Um, you showed hesitancy in regards to the nonprofit clause. When we have this workshop, that information we're going to have to have. Can you research it and email us with results or something? I don't understand why there would be a problem in recognizing nonprofits versus a business. You know what I mean?
If you're asking, can I come up with a list of which one of those are 501(c)(3)'s?
No, a general thing that will be added to the amendment in regards to the nonprofits are exempt from paying the daily rental, as opposed to a, the Eureka is a business, the Blues is a nonprofit.
Point of order? We have a motion on the table to, uh...
The table, and we need this information.
I have the floor, excuse me. To table this item in lieu of a workshop, so discussion should be germane to discussing a possible workshop.
Any further? Yeah, all in favor, say aye. You opposed?
I'll say aye if we have the information I asked for, so we can do it right.
I can't imagine anyone not having a 501(c)(3) there, so easy to get, unless you're a member of the Republican Party. Then you might have a problem.
All right. We're going to do a roll call vote on this, just for clarification.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes, with the info requested.
Ms. Snyder?
I answered.
Yes.
I said, "Yes, with the info requested."
I said, "Yes."
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six-zero.
All right, that moves us on to number three, Discussion on Clarification of Authority to Close Spring Street.
Don't we have to schedule a workshop for that?
Okay, let's go back then.
Diane usually finds out what's available.
Could we ask Diane to help us with that and let us know? Please, sir.
With what? What?
We're scheduling a workshop.
For what?
She'll email everybody and ask.
We just voted on it, to discuss the policies of the...
Parking? No, wait, hold on. Did I miss the memo? Did I forget?
You voted.
I voted, what I voted for was to discuss ordinance 2189 in a workshop. That's parking, not closing Spring Street.
No, we've moved on.
No, we, yeah.
Okay.
Move on with this.
She'll get ahold of everybody and see what's convenient.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Separated brain freeze.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's going to be a while. All right, back to number three, Clarification of Authority to Close Spring Street, motion to discuss.
Motion discussed.
Second.
Second.
Floor is open.
I think what we're waiting to hear is our attorney's opinion.
And I have looked at it somewhat, and I would ask you to give me another two weeks to finish. I was out of town and also working on the lawsuit. What I will tell you is I found in some of our ordinances that there may be a restriction on closing...